All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is presentations, diversity and inclusion update.
Yeah, so I'll just provide this a quick intro here. Obviously, when you look at the society over this past year in particular, the desk of George Boyd and Ron the Taylor have really prompted a lot of society. You know, we saw a lot of, a lot of communities out there that were wrong happy with things. And you know, questioning kind of the methods and institutional cultures of police departments. And you know, when issues have occurred, they tended to stem from the hospital instances, implicit bias and racism. Through all of this, I think it's become pretty apparent that for forward thinking communities and police departments, both small and large, we have to start looking at options to evaluate those and address those concerns. So Chief and I have discussed this on a couple of different occasions, you know, not just this year, but you know, leading up to this point over the past, you know, couple of years. And I think he's doing a really good job of being leader in this area and setting things. So both in our department and in the surrounding community. So we've looked at what other communities have done, you know, in this area. And I think we're actually leading a little bit in this area in terms of controls or refining the right trainings and, you know, foster a right environment to be able to address these things effectively. So again, we've worked with officers on providing that verification training and working to instill an inclusive culture. And I think, you know, while our community relationship has been emerging positive, we want to continue to do everything we can to continue to work with the community and build trust. So I mean, a good example of this was, I believe it was last year, Chief Vanderwood had sent all of our officers to implicit buyers training, you know, among other training group attended. And then this year, with everything we saw earlier, Chief Andrew Lloyd had mentioned that, you know, we'd like to look at a program, we would look at diversity and inclusion for the rest of the system. So we ended up finding a great partner with Pastor Ron Coleman. We've had two training sessions with the police department staff. And I've been really happy to see what everybody's taken away from those, the knowledge and the insight that's come out of that and then the conversations, especially with training that's produced, I think it's going to be valuable for us to see. So provide a little bit of an overview and talk to us a little bit about that. Pastor Coleman, if you'd like to go ahead.
Sure will. And thank you again to Matt and to Chief Tom Vanderwood and to this entire staff. As a participant and active worker in our community, just a little bit about Pastor Ron Coleman, I'm a 40-year employee of the community. Retired as an executive manager, had years of training and did diversity training for Consumers Energy for about 10 years as a part of the role of the management team. When the chief approached me about doing some training, I certainly agreed, being an active part of our community and wanted to participate. Certainly, as I've shared with, with the chief, I'm also a chaplain with the Kalamazoo Public Safety Department and in a program called Pastors on Patrol. There are six pastors, the initial group, we ride along with the officers. We work with a lot of the new officers on the Kalamazoo force. We've since worked with our chief and we've taken the necessary liability coverages to have some of our pastors as a part of the Decatur Ministerial Association ride along with our public safety officers here in the village to better gain an opportunity for us in working together. So what I provided for the chief and the team was a two-day session. Then as a backdrop, I use the 21st Century Police Report. That's a couple of years old now to really put the basics for a conversation about diversity and inclusion. And let me share with you what I started out with and the very first thing that I shared with the team. It says, does diversity training actually work? One of the most common ways that companies attempt to address organizational diversity is through formal training, yet research on the effectiveness of such programs has yielded mixed results. Some studies show that diversity training is effective, others show it's ineffective, and still others show that it may actually lead to a backlash. This has led to pessimism regarding training with some claiming it simply doesn't work. And I love the chief's motto, and I kind of drove him down to share with me what his vision was for the department. And he, in very simple terms, said it this way. He said, this is only going to be as good as we decide to make it. And I kept that in front of the group as we worked through the six pillars of the diversity training. The first part of our training, I went through the consensus report of the makeup of our community and used as most, the most current data off of the village website, along with state data to actually paint the picture on who the department was working with. As a part of that, the six pillars of the, of the program, the first one is building trust and legitimacy. That second pillar is policy and oversight. The third is technology and social media. And we spent a great deal of time talking about the impact of social media now, not just in policing, but in everything we do. And I just had my own experience having a messenger page hacked here at the church, which made it really interesting working through that for the group. The second three that we did in the second segment were community policing and crime reduction, officer training and education. And here's one that was really important for me, and it's called Officer Safety and Wellness. And in those six pillars of US policing and that entire program, we were able to really begin the dialogue with the department on diversity and inclusion. And in our, in the census group, it had, the community had one Asian American and one of the officers knew exactly who that person was by name, which, which led me to know that the interaction with our officers and people in the community is of such that they can know them by name. Our officers are waving at our residents, which, which is a good sign, it's a welcoming sign. And so we had some excellent dialogue over the two-day period. Out of that came some excellent ideas about how the department can continue to strengthen the relationship with the community. I have been, and also as the president of the Decatur Ministerial Association, all of the pastors in our group are certainly engaged and excited about working with the department and working with the village across the board, whether it's our public safety department, our schools, whatever the, the group might be. But the pastors are certainly engaged and really hopeful about the future. I can do a deeper dive, but I thought I've been used to doing these meetings, so I know just a really high level overview. Matt, if you wanted me to answer a few questions, if I've got a few seconds, I can certainly do that.
Yeah, I mean, does anybody, would anybody have any questions for Pastor Coleman?
Any questions?
Must have run a really good job of explaining it.
I appreciate your time today, Rod. It's been, you know, I think.
Thank you.
And I both really valued what we've worked with you on. And I anticipate us actually continuing that in the future too. I think it's, it's been a great program for us. And you've been really great, thank you so much.
You're so welcome. And I did leave a copy of that, both Matt and your village president to the council.
Yes.
Pastor Coleman, I really appreciate what you do for the community. I think I appreciate your leadership and I, and I, you know, there is a, this, this, you know, to make us all, you know, talk to each other and communicate to each other, I think that's a good way of us moving forward. And I really appreciate that.
You're so welcome, you're so welcome. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Welcome, looking forward to working with the group in the future.
Thank you, appreciate it. Item on the agenda is fiscal year 20 audit.
Feel free to take their way.
Okay, um, do you want me to share the screen or does everyone has, does everyone have a copy of the audit in front of them?
I believe they do, and I do have actually a copy here. So if you reference the pages, I should be able to get there.
Okay, if you want to go to page two, that's where we'll start. So this is the opinion, the top of that page, the first paragraph, this is the opinion the village received, a unqualified or unmodified opinion. It's the highest level of opinion you can receive. That means we didn't have to make any, or we didn't present it with any material errors in it. You should expect to receive that opinion every year. If you don't, the state will be sending you letters asking why you haven't. So congratulations on that. Next, if you want to go to page eight. This is a, the table here is a comparative statement of net position, just showing how all the balance sheet items changed year over year. The biggest changes I noticed were a decrease in cash and increase investments kind of offset each other, just moving between, I believe, the savings and checking accounts and CDs was the difference there. And a decrease in receivables. And then if we go to the next page, this is a comparative statement of activities, showing the change in revenues year over year. There really weren't too many major changes. The biggest change I noticed was the increase in charges for services and the business type activities due to the refuse program having a full year of operations compared to, I think, a half a year in the prior fiscal year. The next page I was going to go to is page 18. The change in fund balance of the funds every year for the current year. The general fund decreased its fund balance by roughly 86,000 to an ending balance of 654,000, which is roughly 80% of the annualized expenditures, meaning the village would be able to sustain operations for the first of the year if there was no revenue coming in per year, which is a pretty healthy fund balance. Obviously, the major streets fund has a pretty healthy fund balance, but one, one project can wipe that out pretty quickly as, as you guys are all aware of. Same with the, the local street. The next page I was going to go to is page 21. This is the income statement for the water and sewer funds. The total change in that position for the water fund was an increase of 20,000 and a decrease of 50,000 for the sewer fund. And the garbage fund remained pretty flat, which is good to see. Obviously, you want to pay attention on that sewer fund. I am trying to remember, were there any major repairs and maintenance this year compared to the prior year? I think there was a pretty big main break.
I think we did have a couple of different repairs and we're a little larger.
Yeah, which, which led to the, the larger decrease in operating income. So that, that's always something to pay attention to year over year. Obviously, the time being, you guys are, are fine, but it's always good to monitor your rates, making sure they're appropriately set. So. Next page is just say cash flow. Look at the change in cash in the current year. Obviously, there's non-cash items such as depreciation is probably the biggest item you see in the, the village's operation. So looks like both funds decreased their cash balances pretty significantly. I think some of that could also have been the transfer of money into CDs into savings accounts there too as well, so.
Yeah, I think the CDs did run across both the general funds and our proprietary funds there as well. So I think that was one of the.
Yeah, yeah. If you, if you look in the cash flow for investing activities, you can see the $200,000 purchase of CDs in both funds. So that, that was the, the main reason for a decrease there. I was going to say, I thought it had actually gone up net. So also good to see overall that the, the cash is going up net of the change in investment. So. The next pages, I was going to draw your attention to our pages 39, 40, and 41. These are the budgets for the village for the fiscal year. The general fund had, did have two minor overages with the, the manager and the treasurer. I believe those were caused by a journal entry for the purchase of laptops for Matt and Kim with the whole COVID.
Yeah, yeah, I think if I'm not mistaken, I think we had worked with you guys that, and just so the council is aware, we're going to change a little bit how we do pre-pays. You know, there's, there's a couple of choices on how you can do that. I believe to this point, we had done a prepaid expenditure where let's say, for example, we pay for software and that software ends up being something that we use for six months of our current year and then six months over next year. What we had done before is that we would have done an expense for the current year and then a prepaid expense for the next year. So we end up having to do some adjusting entries to kind of, to account for that. So essentially, the, the money that you expend at any time, there's going to be the same, you know, so if it's $5,000 for the service or, you know, the software or that item, you know, you're going to see that regardless, but the way that you account for it can be a little bit different. And after working with the auditors, we've moved to a new system this year where we're going to be expensing those pre-pays kind of all at once when the expense is incurred. So that's where this came from, was that by moving to that, that prepaid expense essentially didn't carry over the way normally would have. So that's where that came from.
And that, that will help with the budgeting process, should make it smoother instead of having those unknown.
Yeah, should make it a lot easier. That's what I'm looking forward to.
Yeah, and those, both those exceptions were below the thresholds established by Department of Treasury. So there's no, no letters coming about those, which is always nice to, it has to go at least 10% over, over budget and that item has to be larger than 10% of that fund's total expenditure. So. Both of those clear that, the major street fund and the other major fund both did not have any budget orders, so that's always nice to see. And the last page I was going to draw your attention to is, starts on page three, it restarts at the bottom of this. So there's one finding we had for gap entries. This is a pretty standard finding for local units in Michigan. I would say most small to medium sized entities, cities, villages typically will have this, this gap finding where we have to track the capital assets, long-term debt if it exists, pension or OPEB if it exists. The, the last two don't exist in the villagers' case, but that's where this finding comes from. It's kind of expected, unless if you're going to hire like a full-time accountant, pretty much is what I would expect. So. As you see in the causes of fact and auditors recommendation of insurance response, it's kind of, just kind of passed on, which is fine because the, the biggest entries just are those full accrual entries. So. That's just something I like to always point out, but it's not a big deal. The state won't send any, any letters about that either. So that's all.
Yeah, basically, I'll supplement that for you guys too as well. Because basically, what that really comes down to, and this has been an item that we've seen on every audit for the last 15, 20 years, is that in general, when you look at financial statements, when you're looking at the income statement, statement of cash flows, things like that, small, small villages like Decatur, we don't have quite the large financial departments that we would have otherwise. So one of the ways that we kind of handle that is the auditors do assist us with, you know, making sure our financial statements look the way that they, they need to and that everything ends up. And, you know, we just, it's one of those things where there aren't enough resources most of the time in terms of the cost that going out and having that done externally, you're trying to get everybody to be able to do that in true, this isn't feasible. So that's where that comes from.
Any question? The council, anybody?
And if, if any questions do arise in the future, Matt, Matt knows how to get ahold of us, we're willing to answer them at any time, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, I would like to thank you all for your time and hope you have a good, good rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt, we appreciate it.
Okay, next item on the agenda is officers' report. The reports, any questions or any, and any of these reports? Anyone that has any questions?
No.
All right. Matt, you want to talk about your report for, for a few minutes?
Sure, yeah, I'll touch on a couple of things. So obviously, COVID-19 is something that we're, we've been monitoring for months and months now. You know, I think obviously for the fact that we're having this meeting remotely, you know, one of the big things we saw in Michigan across the entire state, but also luckily is that over the last month, the number of cases has, has gone up pretty significantly. I think Van Buren County was sitting at about maybe 800 or slightly less than that at the beginning of October. And I think as of today, we were almost to, I think it was the high 1300s or almost low 1400. So it's been a pretty substantial increase there. We basically went from a situation where we were at a high risk in this area. I mean, I know I posted it for our basic page as well on our website, but even the county superintendent sent out a letter that we had gone from, you know, a high-risk environment to, you know, basically an open pandemic, you know, situation even in the county here. So it's been something we've been looking at and monitoring, you know, ever since this all started, to try to do everything we can to keep our safe, our staff, our community, and obviously you guys and our council members and visitors safe as well too. So, you know, we, we continue to do our, our health checks in the morning. We have that monitoring system in place there. We've communicated to employees what the expectations are. So if somebody does get a fever or something like that, how to handle those scenarios. We've been waiting on them for a long time, but we finally got the hand sanitizer stations ready to go. So those are at the entryway to the village office. We have one in the main office there with Evelyn, and then we also have them in the PB and Public Works area as well too. So again, just trying to do everything we can to, to offer the right materials and equipment to, to keep everybody safe as we can. So with respect to that, you know, we continue to monitor the situation and, you know, and address that accordingly. You know, we don't know what the coming months will bring, whether that's, you know, what the state or, you know, the, the state officials and, and departments are going to do in terms of what happens from here. But, you know, we'll, we'll be monitoring that closely and, you know, communicating with you guys on what has to get done. I talked about this last month, I think, but we did get five lighting poles approved by AEP to get some lighting added on Felt Street. I listed the poll numbers, it probably doesn't help you guys very much with those, but basically there's five lights from the one right near the library there on Felt Street down to Pine Street. I mean, if you drive down there, there are some lights there still already, but it, it is pretty sparsely lit, being that that's kind of the main thoroughfare indicator. You know, we had talked, and we thought that would be helpful to see them, you know, lit up a little bit brighter. That was also based on feedback from the community as well. So we've got that, it's ready to go. They said it can take up to six weeks, they were confident they could, could maybe push that up a little faster, but they said with the work they had scheduled that. And then of course, with the pandemic, that's ongoing, it's a challenge as well. Our local road projects are now complete. Jimmy and I will keep monitoring how that goes, but when you consider all the work we did on William Street this year, White Oak turned out really well. That was a little different type of project than we had normally done. That one was actually a three-inch mill and then a three-inch overlay on top of that after the milling was done. So a little bit more substantial than we had in the past, but longer term, I think that'll actually result in the road holding up quite a bit better and lasting quite a bit longer. And then as we look to the future, I do want to remind everybody that we're going to see a much broader mix of fixes starting in 2021. So that's going to include, you know, some chip seals and, you know, crack seals and things along those lines where we're taking into account not just the, the roads that, you know, are in the worst condition, we're certainly addressing those, but also trying to bring in that element where we're going to be doing more maintenance on roads that are maybe rated a little bit better, but to try to keep those ratings for a longer period of time. So I look forward to that. We're still working with Comcast on our phone services. We did get internet services upgraded. We have the lowest tier of internet possible at the village office. And with everything we're doing, you know, with remote operations in terms of webinars for meetings that, you know, would have been in person, you know, a lot of us have, you know, professional associations where there's meetings all the time. The state is holding a lot of webinars, you know, we're seeing a lot of those kinds of things when we're attending them regularly, but the internet was creating a lot of challenges. We had planned to do this back in February, you know, I, I talked to you guys about that and we had some delays. We finally called Comcast up and gave them a little bit of grease and said, you know, we need to get this done. You know, whether we're looking at holding our own remote meetings or, you know, a few different webinars going on at the same time, this is creating problems. So we were able to get that fixed and also working on the new phone system right now as well. So I'm hoping, they seem to think within the next month, we'll have something done. I'm going to keep on making sure that happens. And then work has started on the fiscal year 22 budget. I do want to note, we were going to have some challenges, you know, when with respect to state share revenues at 51 road payments, there are some estimates out there, but we really don't know what the future holds. So it's, it's hard to forecast, what are we going to see in terms of gas taxes? What are we going to see in terms of the, the shared revenues that would come from the state? They have provided some, some updated guidances over the last couple of months, but they've made it pretty clear that there's a lot of activity there. So we're going to do everything we can to try to be conservative with our estimates and make sure that we, you know, have, have enough legal room there that we're not going to put ourselves in a situation where we have any issues. Department heads now are working on getting their final budget request to me. We'll be sending down them and working through those. They're looking at maybe getting our estimated wages and benefits updated and then finalizing our capital projects over the next, next two weeks. So we would anticipate being ready for our first budget committee meeting probably in about two weeks towards the end of, or towards the end of November, similar to the same format we had in prior years. We'll do kind of the first meeting there, we'll go over capital projects, then we bring in wages and benefits and kind of a draft budget. And then we normally will have kind of the final meeting that goes over everything that we presented before we end up finally bringing that draft budget for a presentation to the council at large in January. And then I guess we did get from the coronavirus relief funding that we got from the state, we did submit our first report there. We had received 12,307 in funds that came from the state of Michigan. And we have to expend those by the end of the year, we have to give that back. We had approximately $10,000 in reportable expenses to September 30th. And I would anticipate that, that we'll use that remaining 2,00307. When you consider the extra cleaning supplies we've, we've been working with, I think we'll probably see that. And then I guess the final thing would be the Edgar Burger Building. We are continuing to work on getting that sale finalized. I've worked with the Realtor and we're now just waiting, getting the final land division all squared away. I anticipate having the final survey by the end of next week. And then that'll go over to Schulley's to approve the parcel split, and then we'll be able to close everything. And then finally, I, I did want to take a minute and, and, and thank trustee Packner for her years of service here with the village. I, I think when you look back on the last four years, we've, we've done a lot. You know, there's been a lot of work that everybody's put in and Kenny as well. Both of you guys, you know, we've, we've worked really hard on making a lot of good improvements here at the village. You know, from looking at, you know, projects we pursued, to ordinance revisions, things like that, you guys have both been big helps in trying to drive the progress for the village forward. And so I thank you both for all of your time.
Matt, a good question for you on your report.
Yeah.
Who does, who does the assessment on the lights where they need to be? You know, which additions in the lights, those five lights you talked about? Who decides where they, I mean, who made the decision?
From, from where they would go?
Yes.
I, I had made that call. We, we had talked, I don't remember which meeting it was now, I think it was about two months ago, we had had a discussion with the council on where we were looking at the lights and kind of what our goals were there. And the council had given me the, to go ahead to.
I lost you, I lost you, Matt.
Can you hear me?
I can't hear you. Now I can. No, I just wondered, you know, did you go around, I mean, do you go like to specific places in town? Do you go around the whole town and make decisions based on what you, your tour in the, in the town or?
Yeah, I mean, I.
More lights or what?
I, I think we are going to do some more. I mean, chief and I, you know, I've talked about this recently and one of the, one of the actual, one of the things we're, we're working on is, you know, with our police department, the, the night officers actually give a really good view of the town all night long, you know, kind of trolling things around. So I've asked them for help and said, hey, you know, as you guys are traveling around the community, if you notice an area where, hey, you know, an extra light here would be really helpful, you know, communicate that to me, I'll take a look at it and then, you know, we'll bring that to you guys for approval. So, you know, I, I know basically, you know, chiefly, I think, agree with me on this, that, you know, the more that we can light it up, I guess reasonably, you know, we don't want to have it be, you know, daytime at night. But, you know, if we see areas around town where it's, it's particularly dark and having an extra light there would be, you know, kind of help in terms of security, I think we want to do that. So this was kind of the, the first step in that project, in that, in that direction. I would anticipate that, you know, as, as we move through this, you know, in the coming months and in the next year, we'll probably look at adding them. And, and just so you guys know, I, I think roughly from talking with AEP, the, the general cost for the lights is, it breaks down to about, about $4.50 a month per light, I think is how it normally works. So, you know, it's not astronomical, you have to keep in mind, you know, if we add, say, you know, 100 lights, you know, that's going to be a pretty significant increase per month. But, you know, I would think there, there would probably be an avenue where, you know, probably maybe 20 to 30 lights altogether would probably be reasonable for us to be able to handle.
Okay.
We'll, 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 we'll work on that, you know, with, with you as directly as we, as we get this toward like.
You know, what I'm just saying, we just need to build up on this, uh, these, you know, you know, look around and see if we need any more.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I agree. I agree.
Okay. Uh, the next, okay. Next item on the agenda, uh, we don't have anything for unfinished business. We go to the new business, community cleanup day 2021.
Yeah. So we normally, um, in the past, had community cleanup day on the third Saturday in April. For, for this past year, obviously COVID-19 shifted things and ended up being July. Uh, we talked a couple of times, I think, in the last couple of years about how we'd like to see it pushed back a little bit. So, you know, maybe that second weekend in May or, you know, somewhere around that timeframe. I think there are some instances where, you know, when you look at the third Saturday in April, it can still be quite cold. And for me, I, I think the idea, um, you know, this came up at a council meeting, I think, last year. And the idea of trying to, to couple that with you move the cleanup day to, say, mid-May, you can start like the weekend before. We did that this year, actually, um, we've had a free yard sale weekend in advance. So if there are things people are looking to get rid of, it's like, well, you're, I don't really need this, but maybe somebody might, um, we can try to see if we can't foster that sort of, um, environment leading into it. So if there are things people don't want, but maybe somebody could use them, we're probably a little bit more likely to see, you know, people utilizing those options for that. So that would be my goal. Um, but for this next year, uh, there's a few factors that are going to cause us to, to have a little bit of a delay more than likely. Um, you know, we usually work with the conservation district to coordinate the events. Uh, part of the reason for that is, you know, with things like tire recycling, electronics recycling, uh, working with the sheriff's department for their work group. Uh, we're able to coordinate those things by partnering with the conservation district. So, you know, I think the idea is that by doing that, we save our residents time, um, rather than having to figure out where there is another event somewhere in the county. So it's like, okay, well, it's going to be this weekend, but I gotta drive to Hartford or I gotta drive here or there. You know, by being able to do that right here, I think that's advantageous to the community. And, um, when we started looking at options, unfortunately, with the way they had everything scheduled from last year for the next year, there wasn't an opportunity for us to be able to do it kind of in that May timeframe. It was going to be either really late into the summer. Um, or we were going to have to fore, forego some of those extra things that I think make it easier. So I talked with conservation district rep and I talked with supervisor Druskovich and Kuzman. And we had all decided that, well, you know, we still think it's a better option to have those things available than, um, to necessarily just push it back and not take advantage of those things. Um, and I did talk to Emily, um, with the conservation district and said, you know, this is what we'd really like to see. And she felt that, you know, if, if we agreed to do the April 24th date this year, um, she would look at trying to look, work with us to move things to a little bit later. You know, maybe by two to three weeks next, maybe following year, um, and, and still offering those same services here indicator tires like and stuff. So I, I think moving to the 24th for next year would be fine. I, I made a mistake there in the motion. It would be community cleanup day 2021 on April 24th, 2021. Uh, I don't know why I accidentally put 2020, but, um, yeah, that would be the motion needed is to hold it on April 24th, 2021.
All right. No questions I need for community cleanup, uh, to be held on April 24th, 2021.
I'll make the motion that we hold community cleanup April 24th, 2021.
T. Jackson, any second?
I'll second that.
Steve Varan, all, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close. Okay, a motion carries. The next item on the agenda is business, business loan application.
Yeah. So we, we, we've talked a couple of times about how, you know, there are avenues with COVID-19 where we could maybe leverage, um, our home rehab loans or business loans, um, to help people that have potentially been affected through COVID-19. There, there are some issues, you know, if you look at the national landscape, I'm hoping things change. But, um, when you look at the, the, the relief that's been offered for small businesses, there's not a lot of options left. Um, a lot of that money is kind of dried up right now and we're waiting on, on the federal government to open up, uh, more avenues there for, for those things to happen. So, um, with that in mind, um, Mormon Printing reached out, um, and submitted a business loan application to the village. Um, as all of you know, Mormon Printing is the producer of our local newspaper, the Republican. Um, on October 26th, the loan committee met to consider the application and determine a recommendation. After reviewing the loan request and subsequent materials, the loan committee recommended that the loan be approved. Um, Dave Mormon explained in the application that COVID-19 in particular has taken major toll. And he's doing everything possible to keep operations going and keep our local newspaper up and running. Um, and just, I guess, just to give a, you know, an overview, kind of what happens in this scenario was that when you look at advertising, um, you know, one of the things that businesses will do when, you know, face in these situations is say, well, you know, what expenses do we have right now that we could eliminate? So, you know, that could be, well, you know what, for that ad we have in the paper, we're going to take that down for now and we'll come back to it at a later time. So that plays a big role, you know, a lot of the money that drives the papers up comes from that. Um, and then subscribers too, when you look at households, there are instances where, when you're looking at, you know, reduced income potentially and, and some other challenges that people are facing. Um, you start to look at and say, well, what do we need and what can we do without? And that's one of those scenarios where we can utilize that. So we can say, oh, you know what? We'll, uh, we'll, we'll eliminate that subscription to, to the paper for now and then we'll pick it up again a couple of months later. So I think that's had a, a pretty big impact on, on, on the company there. Uh, the application requested a loan amount. Um, he basically had said he wanted to see at least 15, but requested 18. Um, so we would need to discuss whether that makes sense. Again, the loan committee did approve the loan, um, the loan application. So, um, you know, I think when I talked to Dave, he basically said that, you know, his goal was to see, you know, if possible, a deferment period of six months. Um, when I checked, I believe we have $86,000 still in the business loan fund. So, you know, we have the funds available here. And, you know, I guess the other thing to keep in mind is that, you know, that could be the potential, you know, for our newspaper to be, to stay running or potentially running some serious problems. And, um, you know, from a local government standpoint, having a local and community standpoint for that matter, you know, having a local newspaper is a big deal. And it, 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 losing that would be, I think, a, a big blow to the community as well. So, you know, I think the loan amount is huge. Um, you know, there are, you know, I think it's justified in terms of, you know, getting caught up with some of the bills. And, um, supplies need to be, keep the paper going. And I think that six month deferment period could work for me.
Any, any questions? Anyone?
Um, I just want to say, I, I think that this loan should be approved. I, I was on the loan committee, um, and I agree with Matt. I think the paper is very important to this village. And this money over the beginning of when I was on the council was just sitting in the bank. We weren't really making anything off from it. And Ali, you had said, if, you know, no one's going to apply for these loans, why do we have the money sitting there?
No, I'm okay. I'm, I'm just saying if there's any questions, you know, the loan committee decided they're, they're going to give them the loan. I'm okay with that. I'm just.
Yeah. And, and just to clarify, just so everybody knows is that, you know, we've looked into that and with both the home rehab and business loans, you know, those are reserved for those purposes. So, you know, it, it really is advantageous, um, through the community when these things come up to be able to actually take advantage of those. Otherwise it really just sits in the bank and, and we can't put it to any of them use. So, you know, I think this is a prime example of where this can be a, a real big thing and we can have a real big impact. And, uh, the other thing I wanted to mention too is, you know, of course there, there are slimmer avenues with this. But as things come up, you know, we are going to encourage anybody that, that has applied with us, you know, Mormon printing included, to, to look at options that may come down from the federal government for small business loans too. So one thing that could happen is, um, there are options where if you finally see another round of funding come in for some of those, that may open up an avenue where Dave may be able to take advantage of that and pay back the village and then to get that loan potentially forgiven. So, you know, there are, there are some good options out there and I, I think, you know, after we looked at everything, it made a lot of sense.
Okay. So we need just to make a decision, the decision, somebody needs to make a motion. How much we're going to, is it 15,000 or 18,000?
I don't have a problem with making a motion to approve a business loan application for Mormon printing for 18,000.
All right. Need a second please? I need a second. Okay, so Steve Jackson, trustee Packner, roll call please again.
Oh, Tim Jackson?
Yes.
Trustee Hayes?
Aye.
Trustee Packner?
Yep.
Trustee Gunther? Trustee Mead? Trustee Varan?
Yes.
President O R.
Yes. So is it like four to?
Yeah, it's four.
All right. Then, uh, four and one upstand, uh, motion carries. Thank you. The next item is a CMF overlay Harrison Street.
Yeah. So, um, hopefully be able to stick with my headset because it's been dying on me, but, um, I'll try to make this pretty quick. So with the Harrison Street property, we've had several people call us up. Uh, one person in particular, um, that had mentioned that they wanted to, you know, you guys might know this is that the old Burke Sawmill. Um, it's a basically kind of a big warehouse and it's about nine acres of land on Harrison Street. Um, there's been interest in that for a potential, uh, commercial marijuana facility for the grow operation. Um, so we, we looked at it when they called and said, you know, we don't actually have the, an avenue there to be able to, um, to approve that at this point because it's not included in the overlay. So we looked into it. It is zoned industrial. Um, you know, so it would make it eligible for that. So we started looking and said, well, you know, what was the rationale for maybe why it hadn't been included, you know, et cetera? And we're trying to get a little bit of, of background on it. Um, and, and basically one of the things that came up, um, is that, um, it's right, it's pretty close proximity to the Decatur Head Start Building. Um, in essence, while the warehouse is set back from the road that they'd be interested in, you know, upgrading, the property itself does, but right across the street from the head start. So we looked into this, uh, we talked with, um, the state and we looked at the MRTMA and our local ordinances. And what we found was that facilities would not be permitted to be closer to the two, than a thousand feet from any elementary or secondary schools. So that would be K through 12 or vocational school. It would not include preschools in the restrictions. So, you know, it doesn't necessarily conclude that from being approved because of that. Uh, so there wouldn't be a legal reason why it couldn't be, be done. Um, however, obviously I can certainly understand where there might be concerns that would come up from that ranging from, you know, potential traffic to, um, you know, is there concerns with odor and other issues? You know, so I certainly understand the hesitation. Um, so I followed up with the buyers and explained and said, you know, this is what I believe is the reason why it wasn't included originally. Um, and then I don't think at that time we had ever necessarily thought that that would be a, a prime property for that to occur. Um, I said, you know, it wasn't zoned for it, you know, et cetera. And, you know, they followed back up and said, well, we, we understand where you're coming from, but we wanted to provide some context. Um, you know, we're not going to be a retail facility. It's not going to be like there's customers, you know, driving to, um, the building on a regular basis. You know, that's not how this would work. Um, they said we would, um, put up a, a fence that would surround the whole perimeter of the property. Um, we have a stringent security system, um, and that we are planning to do this completely inside. Um, we would repurpose that warehouse building. We would have industrial filters installed and, and make sure that this activity wouldn't be visible from outside. You know, so when you look at something like with the, um, White, uh, White Oak project that was approved, I think it was last year. Um, that's one where, I mean, it's still indoors, but the greenhouses are pretty visible, you know? I mean, um, it, it wouldn't be like that, um, to where it would all be completely in the warehouse area itself. So, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it's a difficult decision. Uh, on the one hand, I easily see where, where the concerns with respect to the head start building can be. And some of the, the related matters of, you know, is that the best option? But at the same time, we've also done a lot to try to work to encourage new business developments in the community, um, that can improve properties that have been underutilized. You know, in that case, that building, we've had instances where visitors at meetings that I think we do five years ago, came in and alleged that, you know, people were just staying in the building. They, they weren't, you know, you, somebody was living in there, you know, in a camper or something, you know? So if we could see that actually get developed into something productive, that is a, a, a positive thing. Um, it would obviously contribute to our local economy. There would be jobs that would be created out of that. So, you know, it's, it's a tough one. Um, you know, it's like, I mean, I, for you guys, I would suggest, you know, debating the merits for and against that. And then determining, you know, how does the council feel about that overall?
Any questions?
So do we know, Matt, what kind of signage or anything they would have up for a facility like this? I mean, would it be pretty obscure? So nobody would really even know it's there other than.
Generally speaking, um, you know, I mean, we've been, we've been pretty clear, um, you know, with, with the local ordinance we have that, you know, you can't have something that would be a marijuana leaf in the signage. You know, you can't have, you know, marijuana growers, USA. You, you, you can't use that in, in your naming conventions. Um, you know, so I mean, I don't think that it, even if there was a sign there that was up, that, that you would necessarily be able to drive by and go, oh, I know what that is. Um, or at the very least, we could make sure to communicate that with that prospective buyer and say, hey, you know, this is what the, the deal is going to be. That, you know, it can't be an outdoor, you know, it can't be greenhouses that you construct. It has to be inside a warehouse building. And, you know, in terms of signage, you know, when you take into account the fact that the head start building is right there, we don't want to see something obnoxious. You know, the fence is great. Get it secured. Get your camera set up. I mean, so I think there's an avenue where it could work. And, um, yeah, it's just, it's one of those things where, you know, I, I looked at it too and said, I don't know about this one, you know? It's, it's, it's difficult. I think there's, there's, there's arguments on both sides, you know, where.
Is this, Matt, is this in the marijuana, the, you know, manufacturer marijuana zone, whatever? Is it, is it an outzoning?
No, no. And that's what I guess I wanted to, to touch on as well.
Oh, here's what, here's what I get. Why can't they go where, uh, where it's, where it's applicable?
They, that, that would be one thing. Um, you know, I mean, I think in terms of available land for the.
Yeah, there's available land.
There, there is some, um, but there's not really any open parcels that are really, there's not a lot that are out there right now. I mean, you know, the village has some that we'd like to develop down the line, but, but we haven't really been able to, to get everything squared away for that industrial park area yet. Um, you know, so that would be kind of the other big one. A lot of the other properties, um, you know, are, they may be zoned industrial, but they actually have.
Can I ask you a question, Matt? Let me ask you a question. Do you go to the planning commission for something like this to talk about it before you bring it to the council?
Uh, in this instance, we, we had not. We had taken a rest in you guys first. We, we could do that if you would like. I mean, you guys would be the, the zoning board of appeals. So.
Oh, I know, I know. But I wanted to see what they think, what they're, what they're, what's their input? I mean, I'd like to hear their input.
Sure. We, we, we can, we can have that out if that's what you'd like. I mean, I guess the way I look at it is if the, the buyers, you know, if that's something you want, if it ends up being something where, you know, it looks.
No, Matt, if it's not in the zoning, you know, the zoning, what we zone that this marijuana industry for, why don't they buy a piece of land somewhere and, uh, and just develop that? You know, what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, no, I mean, that, that's certainly a viable, you know, point to take. Uh, I guess the only other thing I'd mention is that the idea with, with this agenda item was for the council to determine, you know, if, if that property would be added to make it eligible or not. Um, this is not, I guess what I'm getting at is like, there isn't been an offer as far as I'm aware of to actually buy this property yet. We haven't had an application for somebody to even put up a facility yet. Um, the question was just, you know, would you guys consider this, would you guys consider this being, you know, a, a property that could, could be eligible or not? So, you know, we were just kind of picking your guys' brains on, on what you felt about that. I mean, if you'd like us to, to run it back through the, the planning commission first, that's not a problem. We could do that.
I would like, I would like to stick with the zoning, uh, the zoning plan for, uh, these, these facilities.
Okay. And I guess that's the other question.
That's my opinion. Okay. That's my opinion. I need to hear it from the rest of the council.
Yeah. I mean, and I guess that would be the other thing too, is, you know, it would, it would be either, you know, keep, I, I guess the, the motion would normally be here in this case, either amend the overlay to include it or not amend it at all. Um, and, you know, if you guys wanted to say, well, let's run it through the planning commission first, that's fine. I guess with the way we thought about it, with everything the way it is right now with COVID, we said, well, you know, they would be the ones that would ultimately decide this. So, you know, if you guys weren't interested.
They just give us some input and what they think. We do the decision to the council and I understand, but I need to hear from more members of the council what they think.
Sure. Absolutely.
You know, anybody else has any ideas? Any opinions?
I think we should discuss it through the zoning commission first.
Planning commission, you mean?
Yes, yes, planning.
Okay, okay. Yeah, okay. It is, did this do that for us, Matt?
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll refer that back to the planning commission and we'll.
Yeah, I need, I need, I need, uh, I like their input. See what they say.
We can get a, a yea or nay from them and then we'll bring that back, uh, next month for you guys to consider for that.
I know the decision to the council, but I like, that's what they are there for.
Yep, yep. No, I hear you.
All right. Okay. Next item on the agenda is MERS.
Yeah. So MERS basically made a, a couple of changes to the way that their plan agreements work. Um, it's not a, a, a major thing for us. I mean, the one thing, and I'll, I'll kind of scroll down so you can see it. So basically they simplified the process here. Um, if you look on kind of the, the page we're on now here, there's base wages, box one wages, gross wages. Um, so before we had actually had several instances where we were saying, well, use these wages, not these wages, but these wages. So before we had actually had several instances where we were saying, well, use these wages, not these wages, but these wages, you know, and not, not this lump sum or not this, you know, non-taxable benefit. So we had to do a lot to kind of clarify what's included and what isn't. Over the last couple of years, we have made a couple of changes where we included overtime, you know, in that as well. And then any shift differentials that would be there. So essentially the box one wages column is what we do right now anyway. But this kind of standardizes everything. So most communities out there are kind of saying, okay, we're going to do this one, this one or this one. So it makes it a little bit easier for everybody to stand. And I think the way that they do this is roughly every, I think, five years or so, you, you send these out and they do a new upgraded agreement that goes into effect. So for us, the reason we have it now is the first date of this new agreement would be January of 2021. So the, the biggest thing to highlight is that nothing changes from our current practices now. So it has nothing to do with the percentages or anything. This is what qualifies as wages that are applicable to what we already have in place. So it's only full-time employees. Full-time staff essentially would be anybody working more than 32 hours per week throughout the year. We exclude part-time employees, seasonal employees, contract employees, et cetera. I mean, some of that stuff doesn't really imply it was anywhere, but so it's only full-time employees that would get that. We have always done so far, at least contributions begin the date of employees hired. So if somebody, you know, hired, gets hired, say next week, they'd be eligible to start contributing right at that point. We don't have, you know, a probationary period before you can participate. I, I don't see a reason for that. And everything is kind of outlined pretty clearly here as to how it works. So you can see at this point, you don't even have to use the table there at the bottom. We're able to just select box one wages and make it very simple. So essentially with this, these have to be approved by the governing body. And then Kim or myself are able to sign these and submit them to MERS. So like I said, there, there are no major changes. It's just a different form and we're reaffirming what we've been doing for the last, you know, two years anyway.
All right. Any questions? There's no questions. You need a motion for this, Matt?
Yeah, if, if you guys could, if somebody could just give a motion to authorize me to, to sign the, the MERS adoption.
And you said there's no changes, changes at all between this and.
Yeah, no, but from what we're doing now, the way that we categorize what income is included, this doesn't count, you know, any, any changes in like percentages, like say if you put in this, that's not even a part of this. It's basically just.
Just admin thing, just.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, basically the way this, that's why I described this is it's what wages somebody earns or what benefits does somebody get where we count that. So a good example is we don't give a, a contribution to the, to the plan because of a health plan. Some places would say, well, if you have that benefit, that amount actually counts as something that would go towards, you know, defined benefit. For us, we don't actually do a pension type agreement. So there isn't really a lot of benefit in doing that. It would be, it really wouldn't make sense. So yeah, this just mirrors exactly what we've already been.
All right. Just, okay. I need a motion to approve the, Matt, to scroll through the thing where you want to.
Approving the MERS addendum as presented and then that will authorize Kim to write the signing.
I need, I need a motion to approve the MERS addendum as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve the MERS.
Good. Trustee, I need a second.
A second.
Does he, does he, does he Jackson? Who is this? Charlene?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, motion carries. The next item is hazards, hazards pay.
Yeah. So I, I don't have, I don't have an answer for this.
Hazard pay.
I, I believe trustee Packer is going to talk about it a little bit, but I'll, I'll give a brief overview. So we, we have done one of these for all of the staff. I think it was two months ago, somewhere in that vicinity. But with, with, obviously with COVID-19, you're, you're seeing an impact to, to a lot of people and you know, there's a, a lot of expenses people are incurring where it doesn't necessarily something that qualifies as, as a village cost, but people are still seeing those things. So whether it's potentially sometimes, well, I need to get a headset to be on meetings, but it's not necessarily for work. I'm going to use it from house, you know, sometimes. So there, there are some instances where, where people are incurring costs to kind of accommodate some of the challenges we're facing with COVID, but it's not necessarily something that would be correlated to a, a village cost. So that I guess I wanted to clarify first.
Yeah, I mean, Matt, just let me ask the, I got a question, just.
Yeah.
You get this lump sum of money, which is like I said, 24,000 or something? Is that what you got?
Yeah, it was actually, there was 20, 28,000 and some change that we got from the, the public safety, public health payroll reimbursement program. And then we had 12,370. I was just talking about that earlier.
Yeah, that's for the COVID, the whatever.
Yeah, yeah. So, so both of those were, were related and, and you know, right now.
Let me, let me, let me ask you this. The COVID, this 28,000, is this, what does it, is it a breakdown? This, so much will go for this and so much will go, is there like restrictions or is there any?
No, well, actually.
Parties or I just, talk to me about, you know.
Yeah, basically, basically the way that that, that works is that that program was designed as a reimbursement to costs that municipalities were already incurred. So, you know, we looked at and said, well, we looked at and said, here, here's what we have incurred for our, our police department, which is, you know, significantly devoted to our response here with COVID. So in, in essence, what that did is it reimbursed the cost the village incurred to fund the police department, you know, for that two-month time span. You know, so basically that kind of offsets the general fund in that regard. So when everything washes out, essentially in that timeframe, all of the money that, that we drew normally, because our police department is funded entirely from the general fund, all that money that we normally would have spent from the general fund was reimbursed through that. So it, it does actually give us an opportunity to have some additional funds to work with. Taking into account the, the last hazard, hazard pay or hazard premium that was done, plus all of our costs right now, I think we would have roughly about $18,500 in funding that would be still available. And I think with a lot of it, we've actually addressed most of the, the main things, you know, with getting the health check, screening stuff in place that was there.
Matt, what is the, what is the total cost to the village? COVID-19? What is, what, how? Whatever.
COVID right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think with what we had submitted to the state of Michigan, we had 10,000 that we had incurred through September 30th. And then I think when we take into account October and November and the cleanings, I think we're roughly at about, about another 1,200 with some supplies and PPE and things. So I think we're right at about, right at about 11,400, somewhere in that vicinity.
So is this, is the total cost of the village due to COVID? Is this, is this money for that too?
Yeah.
All, 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 all the, the expenditures for the COVID?
Yeah, the CRF funds.
What did it come out of this money?
Yeah, the CRF funds actually are required to be utilized on coronavirus-related instances. So, I mean, there's a number of different things that that could apply for. I mean, so you know, applying, you know, getting PPE, for example, would count.
Here's my question to you is. All right. If there is, so like masks and PPE for the police and all that stuff comes out of this money? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So next two months or three months or four months, we don't know when the COVID is done. I don't want to make sure that, I don't want to touch the general fund, the village money to spend for that kind of stuff. You know, instead of this money. Do you, you know, you know what I'm saying?
No, no, I, I hear you. Yeah. I mean, again, this, I, I, I didn't propose this.
No, 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 no. I, I understand. No, no, it's not to you. I'm not talking, I'm just.
Well, I think, you know, I, I, again, Cindy can talk about it a little bit, but you know, I think, I think the idea was, is that when we were looking at, you know, I think it was roughly 18,500 funds that were, were still available that, you know, before we would run into an issue where there was excess, you know, expenses.
I, I understand, Matt. What my question is this, is I don't want to, you know, I don't want to spend any village money, like from the general, uh, general fund. You know, if I, if I spend this money and there is still, we still need it in the future, I don't want to dig into the village, the general fund to spend money that is, we're supposed to be using it, we're supposed to use this money for that. See, that, that's what I'm trying to figure out, you know.
No, no, I understand. I, I think, you know, Cindy, in just a second, we'll, we'll let Cindy, you know, talk.
That's my question to you, man. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think what, what, and Cindy can talk a little more, but I think what she was talking about was somewhere in maybe like a $500 range. When you look at our staff members, that would break down to a cost of about 550 if we did that. You know, and that would leave roughly, you still have $13,000 of funds available there. So I mean, I think her, I believe her thinking was that it would kind of offset some of the costs employees are seeing with some of the challenges that came up. But yet still leaves, you know, we, like I said, it's been since June or since March, essentially, we've incurred about 11,400 right now. So I think 13 would probably be, be a pretty safe margin. But, you know, it's obviously up to you guys to determine, you know, if you think that something like this would be appropriate and you know, what, what level you would like to see and how that would all work. So Cindy, if you, if you'd like to add a few things.
Yes, I would. I'm sure if everyone's watching the news, they see that COVID is ticking up, especially in our area. And with that comes extra cost to our employees at the village. Extra cleaning supplies, extra masks, everything else to keep themselves and their families safe. And I was going to bring this up later on down the road anyhow, and I really truly believe that there'll be another CARES Act passed and we'll probably see some more money. But in the meantime, I don't want to lose some employees because they don't have the proper stuff when they're not here at work because they can't afford it to be subject to, plus they work with the public all the time. I think that, you know, we say we appreciate our employees. We need to make sure our employees are safe also. That's why I was proposing to give them each 750. That way they could have close to 500 in their pocket. We'd still have $10,000 left between the two different funds that we got. We would have had to pay them two months of the police wages and benefits had we not got this money. So really, if you look at it that way, we got that money that we already projected to have to spend. So if you add that 27,000 with the 10, I understand not wanting to spend the village's money. But if you look at the big picture, that's basically the right way to look at it. We were already going to spend that money on their wages and their benefits. So I think that to keep all of our employees safe, right now, special like where my husband works, they're shut down today, tomorrow, maybe even further in this week because people are tested positive. We got to keep our employees safe and their families. I mean, I just, do we have to do it? No, but I really believe it's the right thing to do for our employees.
Any other discussions? Thanks, Cindy. Okay, go ahead then. I need a motion then to, you're going to make the motion, Cindy?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve $750 each for the 11 full-time employees we have. For.
Second?
I, I will say. Motion.
I'm sorry, you said, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries.
All right.
Okay, next item. Public comments. Any, anybody out there, Matt? For public comments?
I am looking. Yeah. So if anybody has any public comments, again, hit the raise hand or on, on the application screen there. Or if you're calling in from a phone, please feel free to press star nine. That will let us see that you had your hand raised and we can call on you if you'd like to address the council. Okay, it looks like Mickey wanted to say something.
Somebody did? Hello?
Am I up?
Yep, you're up.
All right. Good evening. This is Mickey Bittner with Whitman. Hi there. Hey, just wanted to share that last month, ECO, formerly DEQ, announced about a, about $500 million in grant and loan programs. They're mostly related to water systems. There's some related to PFAS, which is not an issue in the village, some for lead service lines. So there's a, a variety of issues and they are, they announced the program without having all the details on all the different programs. There's probably, I think there's seven or eight different ones. And they are having webinars and releasing information as time goes on here. We're, we're dialed in pretty tight watching that. We're going to be checking for eligibility and if something makes sense. Some of these applications are due December 31st and others are due January 31st on the, the first round of the call for projects. If we find something that makes sense, that will benefit the village, just wanted to kind of, we'll work with Matt and Jimmy on that, but you may see something either at December or January. Depending what the application requires, it might require a council resolution or something, but just wanted to share. You may see that coming up here in the near future.
Matt, any, any, any grants would be good for the community, whatever they.
Yes, it would.
Thanks, thanks, Mickey.
Yep, you're welcome.
Anyone, anybody else?
Do you not see anybody else with their, their hands raised at all? Again, last, last caller, if anybody has anything they would like to say to the village council here, feel free to raise, raise your hand.
Okay, if there's no one, I'll, I'll go, I'll move on to council comments. I will go from my right to my left. Mr. Varan, you have anything?
Yes, thank you to Cindy and Kenny for their service. And thank you to the police department and the Department of Public Works. You guys have been great.
Darlene?
So first, for my first comment, I wanted to ask Matt a question because I forgot to ask you earlier. What kind of update do we have on that ceiling right inside the door?
Yeah, we just had a contractor come out and take a look at it, I think, about a, about a week and a half ago. They were going to try to come up with some numbers on what they thought we should do. So we're still, we're still waiting on, on that right now. But we have had, we have had somebody look at it now. We're just waiting on getting a, getting a quote.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm hoping by early next month or by next month's meeting, we should have an item on there for you guys.
Okay. And then I just wanted to let everybody know that back the end of October, I attended a virtual neighborhood watch meeting. So we're trying to get some neighborhood watch going, especially with all of the, the break-ins and everything we've had. And I think the plan is to try to have updates, possibly quarterly at our council meetings. So hopefully we'll start hearing some information from that. I'd like to thank Ken and Cindy as well for their service and wish them luck in their future endeavors. It's been great working with you guys on the council. Welcome to Jessica and Jan this next month. And also thank you to the police department. I saw them quite frequently out Halloween. So it was nice to see them driving around, make sure everybody was staying safe. And the DPW, my husband actually asked Sunday morning, what is that noise? Because our guys were actually out picking up leaves. So that was awesome. So thank you, guys.
All right, Kenny, you have anything?
Uh, yeah, I just want to say, I, I agree with what Matt said about our DPW and how they did an extremely nice job fixing that water main down there. Because it did look like they ran into some problems and they quickly fixed it and got it up and running and. That and again, I, I mean, our police department is, is by far one of the best in the area and I, I really appreciate all of you. Other than that, thanks guys. Enjoy the next four years.
Thanks, Cindy?
Yes, I just wanted to say that it's been an honor and a privilege to be on the village council and I hope that everything goes smooth and going forward. And I wish luck to the next people that are taking over and the ones that are here. And also want to thank our DPW tremendously at this time of year. Not that I don't thank the office staff and the police, but you see them guys out there, take them a bottle of water, a pot. That's hard work and you get. you see them guys out there, take them a bottle of water or pot. That's hard work and you get hot. But thank you, everyone. And thank everyone that did vote for me.
Thank you. Okay, I have a comment here. I really appreciate, uh, appreciate Cindy's service and Kenny's service. And, and I know I'm going to miss you two, uh, to be on the council. And I would like to congratulate Kim Gunter, Jessica Benson, uh, Janice Benson and Jessica Palfrey for, for, uh, for their, uh, election. And I will, uh, welcome, like, and I would welcome just, uh, Janice and Jessica for the next meeting. I wish, and I wish Cindy, I really, I would like to see you maybe around next couple of years from now, Cindy, because you and Kenny, you did a good job for us and I, I really enjoyed working with you two. And thank you for your service. Uh, next comment is, uh.
Thanks, Ali.
No problem. Uh, the next, uh, I, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Trustee, is that trustee Packer or trustee Varan?
No, trustee Packer and trustee Hayes.
Yep.
Oh, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, I'm adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks to all the employees too. I forgot to thank all the employees.
Aye.
Hey. We'll get this all squared away, uh, I'll, I'll stream email down today, but if you're going to see tomorrow, I don't know if you'll.
I already saw.
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, I'll work with Hoover. We'll get that all squared away and we'll be good.
I didn't have to pay last month.
Oh.
Just letting you know. So, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if, yes, I mean.
Hey, Matt.
Yeah, so I don't know if you settled down there.
Hey, Matt, you can hang up if you want.
Matt, you want to, you want to mute, mute the thing, Matt?
Matt, hey, Matt.
I just, well, I just want to make sure that.
Matt.
You need to mute it.
Matt.
What was that?
Matt.
Oh.
He's still online.